All set?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the planning board meeting on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 6:04. We don't need any alternates. Do we want to approve the minutes for May 10th? And I know May 20th is the lengthier one out of two, I believe. Oh, no, May 10th is the lengthier one. If you hadn't had time to catch up on it, we could table that till next meeting if everyone prefers. I'm just putting that out there, so if we want to approve May 20th and go keep the longer ones or go over it at home and stuff.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 20th?
Can we get a second? I'll second.
All in favor?
Well, I'm not done reading on the 20th.
On the 23rd of the week.
Is that what you're doing back in 20th?
Yeah.
Chris, did you say that Joe made four changes on the plan?
Uh, I believe that was what it, yeah.
The four that's in the minutes?
Yeah, the date, grammatical error in number 11 adding the note of no long-term parking or storage, and number 12 was the note of no long-term acres, where it was to be regraded, open without reinformation occurring in the area.
So we had a second. All in favor of the minutes for the May 20th? May 10th minutes? Get a motion, do it. Throw them all, it just looks like a transcription.
Yeah, it's pretty much a datum for the, uh...
Yeah.
What was recorded?
Probably can review them better at home or...
What's that?
Do you want to table these because they're quite lengthy?
I've already read them.
I've read those when they were sent out last week or whatever.
Okay.
Do you guys all set with that?
Yeah, it's just some transcriptions.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from May 10th?
Second. John, second. All in favor? All right, old business, Yokani Agricultural Association Route 109, 13th Street, map 241, Lot 003, members to sign, plan if it's correct, we signed that a few minutes ago, so we're all set with that. New business, OKM Property Management LLC, 190. 193 Foxes Ridge, 248-009, application for conditional use, and he comes in with his own soundtrack tonight. Where do you want to put him? Did you have a table?
Yeah, we're seeking for an exception for survey of the whole property because of the size of the property versus the area that we're going to be utilizing.
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, this is video recorded. There's not going to be a hearing unless he comes up to...
Do you want to come up here? I can move this.
I'll move this side away.
It looks like they took... Boy, you can hear you too.
Okay.
Don't worry, I get yelled at by all the time. Sorry for interrupting.
But we couldn't see it.
That's it.
So we're seeking a special exception for, um, for survey and the entire property on over 193 Foxes Ridge. We're, uh, the plan is to utilize a small area, uh, two, two and a half acres, and the size of the property is 40 some odd acres.
You want to tell us a little more about what you're proposing since you're here tonight?
Sure.
Forty-four acres was the...
Forty-four, yeah. Um, so the, uh, basically it's going to be the left front corner of the property. So I think, I think if the front left pin and possibly the back left pin, I don't know, but that's kind of what we're thinking if we were to get that surveyed and, um, and I forget what they call it, um, uh, what do you call it? Compass or have the headings or whatever they called it.
Right.
Um, for that part of it, instead of the one that's like 1700 feet further away that...
And this is going on left-hand side, going up the hill or coming down the hill?
If you're going up the hill, it's going to be left-hand side, the first portion of the property.
Okay.
To the left of the red building? That used to be the office?
Yeah, the office is the white building, so...
Oh, white, sorry.
Yeah, so before the office on the left-hand side.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so what we're looking to do is put up storage units, mini, mini storage units, fence in an area, put some buildings up and have mini storage units.
Are you going on top of that gravel that's there?
We want to knock that down, knock it down, get it, you know, level, have, you know, have it all proper drainage, all that stuff, so. But yeah, right now it's high. The area we're using, um, you know, would be the top of the hill and then also off to the right a little bit, so yeah, so we'll be knocking it down, compacting it in some areas.
Is that right next to the brook?
The brook's in the back, um, it's two, uh...
You have it listed as 90 feet from the brook?
No, the, well, the, uh...
Fencing?
The back end of what we're utilizing, yes, is, so the back end of the property where the fence is going to be from there back is another 90 feet. So we're going to be using, you know, it's, I think it's, uh, uh, 260? 260 just to what we're utilizing and then another 90 feet after, I believe, right?
Yeah, it says it's 260 by 300.
Yeah.
And then from that point, that back point, 90 is feet from the brook from whatever.
Right, and that's the fenced area, that's not the actual buildings, the building's going to be within that period, that area. I, I think if you have the whole, yeah, I think I have a drawing of the buildings that we're requesting.
You don't have a drawing that shows the Resource Protection District or Shoreland Zone on this, this style of map, Joe?
The, um, yeah, the highlighted thing, is that what you're saying? Uh, highlighted color chart?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it fell into that, uh, I believe, right now, I, I didn't know we were going to be talking about that, I would have my homework done a little bit better, but we did fall into, uh, that area, so we were safe with that.
Because when we're talking about a survey, those are areas that might want, we might want to see surveyed to see exactly where the wetland edge is.
Yeah, yeah, that would be that front area.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Does that brook ever flood?
I, I haven't seen it flood, but I've only been there three and a half years. I mean, I've been there and I used to live in Mill Mills for years, but, you know.
Then do you know if that brook ever flooded? No, it hasn't. Okay.
I think there's a beaver dam up there.
Oh, behind is a beaver pond?
Way, way up behind if, if that, oh, it would.
Yeah, it's off.
It's, uh, it's, it's been there for a really long time. It's not likely that that's going to happen, but there is a dam up there.
Yeah, the whole, all that way up in there, that old logging roads up there.
And it's a huge, that's the Great Maya up in there.
Yeah, I think it goes almost to like Country Road, right, or something like that?
County Road, yeah.
County Road.
County Road, it almost butts Mill Mills Road and then Foxes Ridge. And French, well, you can get to it from French Street as well, that's where the old road used to be.
My great-grandparents, she's still on that property.
Oh, yeah.
They lived in what is now the office, they lived in that house.
I worked there when I was 18. It was the worst three months of my life.
That's because you had to hang out with Mike Ricker.
Yeah, exactly.
Too bad we didn't have the big maps to look at.
Right.
Because these are in our box of...
Well, I think that would, if they produced a better map for us after a survey, that would be all be on there for us to...
But I mean, if we had the maps, the big, the big maps, it'd show us a lot clearer than what this does.
Oh, yeah.
It would be easier for us to understand.
Sure, yeah, I mean...
We'll talk about it, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
He's open damn sure.
How many square feet total would your project cover? The buildings?
Landwise, buildings, I think, I'm sorry.
Or both.
Um, all right, so buildings, I think I get a list of there like 23 or, I should have brought my paperwork with me, yeah.
Is it the same as this?
Yeah, let me see, I think it was on there. Actually, I think I did.
Okay.
Um... Oh, I have it. No, you don't have that one, do you?
Well, there's another one, looks like maybe the revised one.
Yeah, revised, um... Okay. So, yeah, so a total of 25,500, uh, square foot of buildings.
Yeah.
So you're doing that here.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're talking 25,000 square feet of storage building?
Yeah, uh, 25,500, yeah.
Well, wait, and it has nothing to do in a sense with this, your storage units, but what are you going to do with the other buildings that, uh, fall under?
Well, some, one I use for storage right now, the others, um, we're going to rent out as time goes on. I have one rented out, uh, for just storage, uh, construction, guy does construction and stuff. Um, the other one, we're, you know, hoping to get someone in there for like, whatever, for manufacturing, it could be something else, you know, obviously we know we're going to go to the town for that, but...
I mean, those other buildings have always been used for storage, so you're not really changing their use.
No, no.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they going to be like traditional buildings? Are you going to stick build them or...
Are we working on the, or are we going to fix the buildings?
Are you stick building or are they going to be like a Morton building?
No, it'll be like those metal, just, you know, like the ones you see going up, yeah. And we plan on doing cameras, electric fence, uh, not electric fence, a fence.
I don't think we're that high ground of air, yeah.
Yeah, meant to say a fence and just, uh, just regular lighting, you know, for, for the parking lot area, no, no electrical for the buildings, besides a couple outlets for, for like maintenance stuff, you know?
Is there a time that you'd allow people to go in and out?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing, we, um, you know, we haven't fully set everything in, but our, our thought is probably something like either seven in the morning till like nine at night or eight in the morn, you know, something to that effect.
Right, because it's a couple houses right by.
And it'll be a gate that, what's that?
I said there are a couple houses right by that you, you probably don't want stuff slamming around or, you know, whatnot.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We have other businesses and some of them are in residential areas, I mean, mixed, mixed use, I should say, and we're respectful to that and understand, you know, that we got to live together and, uh...
So you put a new road in?
I'm sorry?
You put a new driveway or so-called road into?
Yeah, yeah.
So you contacted DOT about that?
Have I not, I haven't done anything yet, I just wanted to get to this phase and then...
You're getting experimental then to put the, they'll tell you where you got to put the entrance?
Yeah, yeah.
The town doesn't do that, the DOT will.
Okay.
And that's state road, right?
The state road, because it's a state road.
Right, right, right.
What I was looking for, I'm looking at the, the state, yeah, but it doesn't show the resource protection stuff on this one. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear, it was color coded or something, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I think this is just the management of different parts of the town.
Right.
Yeah.
I wonder what, did he see all of this?
What's that?
See all that?
Yeah.
That could be part of it. So like where this building is?
Do we come up and look at that?
The legend.
We should, we should get the other, the map that's in here that shows the different zones on it, the big one.
You got all the colors.
But this one, this one doesn't show the RP or Shoreland Zone.
This is at Foxes Ridge. Good deal.
Jennifer's got a comment.
What's that?
Yeah, Jen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just, just to update the planning board on behalf of the applicants, so you know this is a learning curve that we're working through how you guys want this initial use permanent handles. Um, we, when Mr., when your plan reviewed it all and we did pass this on the applicant, so I don't want to show that he's not prepared, it was Mr. Smith understanding that he would be coming back before you, he was reviewing the entire packet once the application was complete, so if he's not prepared, we take some responsibility for that. Uh, Mr. Smith didn't think it was complete until he made a decision on the survey, whether he had to do the full property or portion, so we did tell him that, that we believe the majority of the conversation would be around the survey, so not having the, the maps and his initial information, not some on our side as well, but just people believe that it wasn't completely, that he made that decision, brought back to you as a whole.
So it wasn't expected to have any questions from the planning board tonight?
Yeah, but that's, that's fine, yeah, I'd rather, I mean...
And like you're ringtone you, you've got the good, the bad and the ugly.
Yeah, no, I don't care, I don't care.
So...
It's not helping us, is it? Well, it doesn't matter, right? Because what I, questions I ask are irrelevant, because that's not what's in the course tonight.
Well, it kind of is, because the survey would show where the wetlands are, and we're just trying to get an idea for approximate location to the project ahead of time before we made a decision if, as to, if we should reduce the...
Okay.
Amount, you know, the amount of the property needing to be surveyed.
Survey.
Right, I believe, because we did kind of go through some of this already, um, when I was talking with Jennifer and I'm not sure who else, but, um, whoever else was here before, I can't, I can't remember which one, Mike, um, maybe? Anyway, um, I think the area was like 50, 50 foot from the brook there, and it changes, there is different colors, like on the opposite side of the road, there, that's considered, you know, you could be further away, um, I forget what they call it, but it's more restrictive and stuff like that.
And then you get the other thing that goes with that stuff too, right, that, um, depending on what that property is, is what the buffer zone is outside the...
Right.
Restriction.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Some of them, some of them is 250 feet.
Right.
Outside the, what's mapped for protection, you know, you know what I mean?
Right, we kind of did all that, and that's why we came here with this, because we feel that we meet those requirements, but, you know, then again, it's better than knowing now before I go getting engineers involved in all that stuff, so, um, if there is an issue.
All right, then it comes, then you come back with everything.
I got 15, I got 40 something acres, I'll put it on a different part of the property, but I'm pretty sure that's a good spot and as long as it works.
Put the zoning map on the property, so that's interactive maps.
Then I don't have to work the computer.
It's in red on the, on this map.
Yeah, I don't know how to make this thing red. Do you know how to work this?
We need tech help.
Well, I'm not very technical.
Yes, normally the, the resource protection is like green.
Yeah, so here's your code, so here's the, um, yes, we've got some in blue and some in green, you want to see the chart that goes along with it?
This here would be resource protection, all that.
Yep, all the green, yeah. So you can take the layers off if you want, if you want to see one of the other layers, it'll show us on tree growth, the watershed, you can play with these layers here.
This is where he's planning on doing it, just over in here.
In the blue, right?
And, yeah, so what we'd like to see is the, this protection area going through the bull.
If it does.
So the yellow outline is his whole property.
On the one side.
Right, that's what he's applying for conditional use on, so the yellow outline is 193 Foxes Ridge.
I see it going through. You see it, because I don't, I, I doubt it stops there.
Yeah, so if you click on a different property, you can see his whole triangle now, and you can see that it doesn't, I mean, that's where...
I mean, the brook doesn't stop there, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, see the blue line? In it. Well, younger eyes have made George the Gavin, George the Gavin, John.
So the brook travels in there, but this area, the zoning is still blue.
Right, but there's a buffer through. We need Gavin, Gavin's good at this one.
It's all right, right? Well, it will continue going through with the brook.
Right.
So the yellow, the yellow portion, this is his property, the whole, whole yellow, whole yellow triangle. If we ta, if we click off of the property so you can better see it, look on a different one, you can still see the outline, but the portion is in, that's the critical rule, the green, right?
Vice Greg's house.
What you're blue is in the middle of the line.
That's a mixed-use district.
So I think...
Oh, yeah, mixed-use, yeah.
It's kind of on top of the...
That's what the protection is.
Top of the shore.
Yeah, I mean, it's a mixed-use, so the portion that he's looking to build in is in mixed use?
Right, oh, sure, yeah.
So if...
So it's not in critical?
No, it would be, could be both.
Depending on how far he doesn't?
Mixed use is just an overlay.
Can you put, um, the square of this project back on?
Right, with the 150 feet, right? I don't know what it is, depends on whether it's a, for storage, more second.
So it's like right, it looks like he's, like you said, he's 90 feet from the brook.
But if he's out in here.
Broke set back 75 feet, so he has 50 feet there, and it looks like he's not even showing the zone over here, as far as I can tell.
No, 269.
And that, and that's like the fenced area, that's not, um, you know, any buildings there.
Right.
But if he went like this, it'd be 250 feet, 50 feet off the road. How far back's he going?
You can see...
Uh, it says, well, the first building would be, or storage unit.
It says purple, just the 75 of the street.
And what's the last one?
The last one, he doesn't give intervals on the...
Or could be the aquifer protection district.
Uh, 25 feet.
Here, but it's hard to tell.
Looking at this map here, Gavin, seeing that on, what Jim showed us on the computer, this map does show the buffer, now you can, now you can see what it is.
You know where it is on there now.
Yeah.
Do you want to look at this map?
Come over there.
This might look a little bigger too, because they blew it up, I hope that helps, where the blue is the mixed use.
Yeah. And this brook, that's this brook right here, and it goes all the way out across, in and across Foxes Ridge, and down by Bob's Greg's house, and then into the river.
And by, by Neil's...
So this is the buffer?
Mm-hmm, that's the 75 feet, yeah.
Okay, so if you look at the measurements here, you can overlook at this guy.
Sure.
It'd be good.
All right.
If you look at these measurements, that there's 226, right, that's from the road, this is your property. And this piece is 269, um, to the brook, I would assume, to the brook.
Yes.
How far back from Foxes Ridge are you planning on coming back? Because this is a buffer zone.
So, so we're going 75 feet and then from there, 260, I believe, 260 on to that, so 75 from the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And then, uh, then we start, and then we go 260, I think is how we have it labeled on there. It's a different, different, oh, no, that's right.
So it'd be almost close to that buffer, I think.
Yeah, I think we had 90 feet, I mean, with, I mean...
15 feet from...
Generally speaking, I mean, obviously, when we have a surveyor come in, they'll obviously fine-tune all that stuff, and if we have to tweak what we're doing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that still high right there? The whole, the whole piece of it, it's pretty high.
Only part of it, so...
Does it slope to the brook?
Well, yeah, it's high up in here, but also right here, um, so this kind of goes up as, I don't know, what grade? It's a little bit of a grade, and then it's, it's probably about eight, 10 feet higher, and then it drops back down.
That's why you throw the wood.
Yeah, yeah.
All the bigger 10s.
Going towards the brook, is it, on the brook or is it south?
So, yeah, so, no, it doesn't, it drops right off, probably, I don't know exactly, but...
30?
Yeah, like 100, probably 100 feet before the brook, 150 feet before the brook, I didn't pull a measurement, but probably 150 feet, it drops down, probably, yeah, almost straight down, so...
Well, we'll get the contours on the survey too, right?
Right.
So we'll be able to see that.
And you'll be changing the contour, right?
Because there's like a road or path that goes around that hill.
Right.
Propose about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what pins are you talking about that you're going to, you're asking us about?
So this pin, and I would assume either that, you know, probably that pin would be good for you guys to, so that way we're making sure we're on track with everything we're doing, but this pin over here, we're asking, you know, that we don't have to do, or this pin, because it's so far away from what we're going to be doing right here.
I, I would think, this is just my opinion, obviously, then.
Although that would be an easy pin.
All they, all they would really have to do is survey whatever this...
The area where you...
Area where you're going to be doing.
Right, right.
And to make sure you're away from, uh, when you think, Gavin, I don't know, there's no sense in that road, survey doesn't make any sense.
Right, right, having to mark it out, good.
And just survey the possible, if you want to be using, doesn't that make more sense, really?
The only thing he has to do...
To include the brook.
Yeah, this one.
Oh, yeah.
The wetlands method or something that had to be done or something, maybe by the brook.
But if he, when he does a survey, and this is obviously would be on the surveyor, uh, he told your surveyor, we need to stay out of this, they know a lot more about it than I do, but you need to stay out of this buffer and just survey and pin it, so that you're not in the buffer.
Right.
And that survey, to me, should be a lot more reasonable than...
Than my 300-foot take did.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
Right, right, they'll come in, and like I said, if, if we have to squeeze the project down and, and come with only four buildings or whatever it ends up being, I think, you know, we did a pretty good job measuring everything, but obviously, a surveyor will have it exact.
I mean, that should, really should be our only concern, is that buffer, right?
Yeah, there was another zone, then I couldn't tell what it was Gavin was looking at, something brown in there.
But that'll come out in that area when they do. I think that's the aquifer protection district.
Yeah, I think that's what that was, yep.
I mean, that, that property, I mean, it's been a business for 100 years, you use it as a commercial business.
Not a wetland buffer, no.
So it isn't, right?
No.
Right. It'll be quieter than it used to be.
That's right.
It has been quieter.
This is the Shoreland Zone.
I know, I used to live in Mill Mills for years, and you could hear, you could hear when he turns it on, you know, when he was running.
In terms of if you want to see this on the ground, it's saying, well, yeah.
Kyle came with the property too, so...
Yes. Yes, I just talked out a couple weeks ago, for the talk. I'll make a motion, if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
That, um, this survey, uh, would just be for the property that he's planning, piece of the property he's planning on using, uh, to clarify that, uh, the property will be to clarify that, uh, the property will be out of the, the buffer zone, uh, the project will be out of the buffer zone. Does that sound right Gavin, to you?
Is there something else you were looking at with the brown?
I just didn't know if we wanted any numbers in there for, you know, how far along the property line the survey would go. We're just gonna leave it open.
For the project.
To the project size.
Yeah. I mean, if he's gonna stay out of buffer zone where he's planning on, obviously, um, when the survey does it, he's gonna stop and draw a line just inside, you know, or outside the buffer zone, and just draw a straight line, and then bring it back to the road, and this is the property you're putting your storage units on. I mean, that's, that's my thoughts. Somebody wants to make a different motion, I'm fine with that.
Should we do a sidewalk?
Well, we, yeah, we, we, we would do that, Pat, after this motion. This is what he needs now, and then he'll bring stuff to us, and then you do the sidewalk, and.
Yeah, we need the completed, or the application.
And this is just the first part, he wants a waiver.
Given some guidance.
Right, in order to go to get, uh, I, you know, the next step, I needed to have this part done, then I'll get the survey to do his thing, and then I'll come back.
Yeah.
It's, it's a waiver, not having to have a total survey, is what he, my understanding, when I read from Ben.
Instead of wasting time and money on forty-four acres, it could bring it down.
Right, and I thi, and I think the other question was though, um, you know, because I don't wanna go spend money on surveying all that, if the town's like, no, we don't want storage units there, so I think that was part, part of kinda what we're looking to get is, I don't wanna go, you know, hiring guys and find out, oh, this looks good, it fits, but you know what? We don't want a storage unit here, so.
I think you're gonna find out after June nineteenth, because there's actually a change to the zoning law that specifically calls out storage units as being copasthetic, adds them, adds them to the plan, or to the zoning law. Um, however, they do have a limit of five thousand square feet in the proposal, so you might have to tweak the size of that sixty-thousand-foot building in your, in your planning.
If it, if it gets voted.
Gets voted in, yeah.
Right, right, which, I kinda had it both ways at one time, but they, I had to, well, from what I understood, I had to decide one or the other, so I said, well, I'll go for the bigger, but if I have to, I'll go to the smaller size.
We should know after June nineteenth.
Yeah. So, yeah.
But, I guess I, I make that motion to grant the waiver on the survey.
Any second?
One second.
All in favor?
Alright. Thank you, folks.
Alright, uh, we have a sidewalk or. June tenth, uh, it's gonna, I have the address, we can't access it from San Page.
To be able to show, he's gonna show.
You, you can't, you're not anything. You want the address for the sidewalk?
Sure.
Uh, it's eighty-two Sand One Road, because we can't access it from San Page Road, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, you can't, there's no access, it's a fancy, right? Providing this time gives us a, notice to the public.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Seven days, I don't know if it does or not.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it went out anyways, I believe.
Went out?
Yep, it was posted, I believe, as soon as we're done.
What is Sand One Road?
Uh, I think I said Sand One Bullet Road, I'm not sure, I'll have to look at the post, but it's, I did it as the map block, so anyone could look at the town map online and get the gist of where it was gonna be, so it's been out and posted.
Bye.
We should just be clear in the future as to where we're meeting for the site.
Right, but we've been running bare bones.
Yeah, no, it's something we overlooked at the previous.
Right, well, I think we did say the map a lot, but I didn't have the, after thinking, we can't access it from.
Right, even though that's how they're gonna access it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and we were running it bare bones, so we're gonna get back wrong with things in the proper way.
And we're gonna get a movie maker?
Oh, yeah, I believe so, that's why, I, as soon as we were done with the meeting Friday, I called and set that up, and then the public hearing for the seventeenth at six, six P M. for the solar hearing as well.
I would just.
And that's in-person.
Like, man, Chris, where it was set the Sand One Road, that maybe somebody hang around till six o'clock in case other people do come, to tell them that we're going down off, 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 off the Sand One Road and not San Page Road.
That's on the city post office, you mean?
Yeah, I'm waiting.
Yeah, we can.
I mean, it could be people, I mean, you know Gavin, we pass sidewalks sometimes, nobody shows up, sometimes there's ten people that show up.
Right.
And everybody's standing up there waiting for the sidewalk.
Well, we can read that, add it through the fence, like, red dawn.
Well, that's true, I just, I don't know, you guys do what you want. It's your view.
And then, public hearing is that, that's on the seventeenth, our next meeting, at six P M. Pending projects, no action to be taken.
In that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's physical here, we're not doing that.
Yeah, that's all in-person, physical, uh, from my understanding, everything's been waived by dislike men and whatnot, and.
Cool, good.
If you feel like wearing a mask, wear a mask, if you don't, it's a party. Uh, pending projects, no action to be taken at this meeting, Kelly Orchard, uh, Whitetail Ridge Properties LLC proposed two-house subdivision, map two-five-one, lot zero-zero-eight, sub-zero-zero-one, it's in review with the planner. And Martell Estates, Arnie Martell, seven-six-zero Youngs Ridge Road, map two-one-seven, lots two, two-eight through zero-three-zero. Application for an eighteen-lot subdivision pending, effective paperwork, and that's it for tonight.
You tell me, oh, go ahead.
I just got a, a question about the, uh, Whitetail Ridge. Are we gonna be sending everything to the planner to review, because, uh, a two, two-lot subdivision, I'm not sure we necessitates the planner for some of these simpler projects, what do you guys think?
As far as I know, right now we are until everybody gets up and running, for now.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it's.
It's my.
Simple projects, it would save the town a couple bucks to not have to review everything.
Well, it's already there from.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know that, but I'm just saying in the future.
No, I think.
I'm wondering how many projects you've seen.
I don't know, I, I think maybe once we're up and running with new personnel from downstairs and stuff, we'll, probably won't, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because I don't know when it began, so.
Okay.
Where is Whitetail Ridge?
Uh.
I know the map and lot, but that doesn't.
That's Mill's Road. Mill Mills Road by Mary Wada Houses.
Okay.
Just before where they cleared it up.
Yeah, yeah.
On the lower end, where they still left, this pine grove's still there.
Yeah.
She's not in the booklet for you, if you can take them home, and she's not as well.
Oh, yeah, it's, but nobody, I think it was down by the, close to Andrews, Gold Farm, yeah.
That's good.
On the same side of the road as Mary's?
Yeah, if you're coming from my house, or.
Yeah.
Be on the right, lower end.
Yeah, Whitetail Road that was up.
Yeah, just before the curve.
I know where it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we all have homework to review this.
Great, thanks.
This will be on our next agenda.
Uh, I'm not sure at this time. I believe so, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, hard to tell, I'm not knowing.
Not knowing what?
Well, if it is, we're not.
You're the one that sets the agenda guy.
Well, you know, if everything's up and up, I, you know, I have to review it before I can say anything, so I don't wanna say it and then push the issue later on. And then I could put it, I mean, we, on the next agenda, we already have this public hearing, so do we really wanna get into this on a public hearing night as well? Might overwhelm us a little, depending on who shows up for the public hearing. Could have two people, or we could have forty people, so I'd rather keep it low-key if we can, and deal with this in July per se. Motion to adjourn. Pat, you're the savior tonight. Could I get a second? John's in, all in favor? Adjourned. Thank you.